Prior to the regularly scheduled meeting, the matter shall be considered upon the two thirds of our public council.
Sam, on the article three, you said Friday, is that supposed to be Saturday?
Jessica and I talked, and I think with how, what, how you pay bills that Friday.
On article three, it was Wednesday.
Yes.
That was revised when you sent us the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, the person said Thursday, that's just probably on the market. All right.
Mayor, uh, uh, not to upset the apple cart, if I could just offer a couple of words here.
Yeah, okay.
Again, in some instance, probably easier way to come to this, however, this can work. If the group approves this, this could work really, really well. It's going, I hear councilwoman Oz concerned about items, others y'all said too, but Margaret, I remember you saying, you had this stuff Tuesday at six, and we never really had anything in line before, nothing on paper. We tried to be flexible, and we should still be flexible. But having at least some guidance, the mayor knows what his obligation is, Jessica knows her obligation, Melissa, everybody else who wants to bring something here, we can get it to you by Friday. The 24-hour clause again, if something comes up last minute, they can bring it, y'all can decide whether or not to hear it. It's important for the party members themselves to know that if something's brought up, you know, day of the meeting, there's gonna be some questions to ask. How long have you known about this? You know, we need to know this. Again, trial and error. But this could, could help bring a regular efficiency to work. And, and I'm proud. If y'all do this, I'm proud of you. Not I, some of these are my suggestions, but ultimately, if y'all choose to enact this, great credit to you guys for coming up with some ideas that we can look in the paper, and that we have some guidance for.
Motion being set for the age. I don't say. We did discussion. All within the. In your code. At his care. Real quick, before we get to finances, financials last, Chief stands for him, get this one.
Law enforcement report for, for May. Officers Connor responded to or handled 146 incident calls, conducted 19 investigation interviews, conducted 138 traffic stops, 29 motor assists, 179 building checks and extra control. Officers issued 12 city ordinance violations, made an arrest, documented 13, 30 investigation and control reports. Assisted the sheriff's office five times, full show zero, state personnel three, fire medical three. Officer Willie Tree completed a law enforcement instructor class, become a law enforcement instructor in the state of Arkansas. The department's training hours is 584.5 hours combined. Last month, officers participated in the National Highway Safety Administration seatbelt legalization, along with other law enforcement agencies statewide, enforcing seatbelt laws. Coming up on July 2nd through the 6th, officers will be doing another DWI mobilization with the state, helping look at law enforcement throughout Arkansas that goes through July 2nd through the 6th. Officers will be out day and night from all six streets and main highways, enforcing DWI laws and other traffic laws. Then once that's concluded, on July 9th through the 31st, we'll be kicking up again for the state of Arkansas, law enforcement agencies across the state for speed mobilization. That will run through July 9th through the 31st, and officers will begin to be out day and night along same streets and main roads, enforcing speed laws.
Questions for Chief Stevens?
I didn't, we've talked a little bit about step grant, Chief, and I just have just a couple of questions. Does the step grant cover just the overtime hours that they're actually out, or does it cover additional cost of benefits that go along with that overtime?
For months, and it's a, it's a whole package.
It's a package.
It's raw.
Okay. Is there a dollar amount on that grant that you use up, and then when it's, oh, when it's done, it's done?
Correct.
And what is, is there certain, I mean, you said you've been in law, okay?
Yeah.
Is it finished?
For like last month?
Like, yeah, because I saw on payroll sheets, I just saw time in April.
So like, so like, um, when we finish one, when we finish one, we have to term the, we have to term the time chief, we have to keep laws and all that, then we'll submit that to the state, then the state will reimburse, the state reimbursed the state.
How long of a process is that, that we're out, you know, that we're?
It can vary. I know they, they're doing close, they closed the end of this month, so they are behind now, or we'll be, we'll be our another check on, to lock first.
Well, and you said another check, have we already received one check?
Yeah, we, we hear.
Where, where, where does it come from? And my, my question that is because on the, on the first page of your financials for revenue, it says Arkansas State Police Grant, and then, and there's an amount in bay, and then there's a year-to-date amount, amount. But on the second page, under expenditures, there's step grant expense. Is that the same thing? Is that, is Arkansas State Grant, Arkansas State Police Grant income the same thing as a step grant expense? You know, we've got your income and your expenses. It's on page one and two of your police financial. I didn't, y'all just, because the numbers don't, okay, the numbers don't.
They, they not familiar. Because I know when we turn in the hours, and then I put all that stuff in, how many hours, they look over time, and it, the amount, and it all calculates, and it all turn that in, and say, it'll be like $2,200.
Right, there's exact, well, there's one, there's an expense for $2,270, that's a.
That, that was, yeah, that, the longer ones, they get more, because you have more people out, more hours, so that could go anywhere from just like four or anything where you're in, you're gonna get a few hours, so it would be a couple hundred dollars for everything that, and then I'll turn that in. Once that's done, they'll send a check for that particular one. Now, there, there's say three DWI mobilizations through the year, and we're granted say $8,000 for DWI, $8,000 for speed, it's different amounts, and once we reach that, we're done.
The income.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I was just trying to figure out, will it, will it note on here step grant income here? Okay.
I'm not sure how we, let's see if we can check something.
We'd like to see that, like, you would see that we are being reimbursed for that.
Yeah. They send us emails from Arkansas, we open, I think it was Jessica and the mayor, they get it as well. I know the mayor has access to, um, he has access to the state website and everything, where you can actually see whether reimbursement is submitted in, whether it's received, and all that stuff.
Like I said, that was just why I was questioning where it comes in and where it's not.
Okay, we did find the step grant expense, it was to cater lip counts for two scout radars.
So the expense, the right back, the expense that you're seeing on there.
It says step grant expense.
Is that $2,200?
$2,270.
Okay, so in, when I did this year's step grant, we put in for two PPTs and two radars, and we buy them, and they reimburse after that is. So now that we have paid for them, and now they will reimburse us that money. Anything with, anything with step grant, so every year when you apply for the step grant, anything that's in that category of what you enforce, speed, DWI, anything like that, we can, we can ask for a grant of help to get that instrument, and if they grant that, they, we buy it, and we just do it just like at home, we've got a time chief, we send them the mail, and they just reimburse, they just reimburse.
Okay, so how are we gonna see that on the, on the, on the revenue side, Jess?
We're gonna add in the like.
Okay, it's the same. Okay, all right, and that's, that's my question, because I didn't know what this Arkansas State Police Grant income was, because it shows for the month of May, we got $1,658.96 into the police fund, and year-to-date, it was $5,236.83. So I just didn't know what that was for, based on the numbers on that on the second page, so.
We'll make the step rate specifically.
Okay.
So the step, the step rate is pretty, pretty well-known, we, I don't know, like, state police does it, mayor, sheriff's office does it. Mount Colman, Harrison, Good County, they do it, they have it year-round. What we're, what we do is what we call is the means step. We just get certain sections throughout the year, where Mount, like Mount Colman, Harrison, they can work, as soon as they're off their shift, they can turn around, click on step grant, and go to work. From talking to them, guys like, say, Officer Treats, like, they're working his, his shift, talking to like a couple of Mount Colman guys, they can be out working their shift and say it's DWI enforcement, they can be in the middle of their shift and get a DWI, for months, they can come off that, they get them off and click on that step grant, and work that DWI, click back on their shift, but they just gotta make sure they can, they just gotta make sure they continue to, they gotta meet their certain hours, because if you don't meet your required hours, you don't, you don't get the step grant. So for instance, if, 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 say you don't meet your 84 hours, and say someone comes out on Monday, Tuesday, they put in, they put in 30 hours, okay? But then in two weeks, they don't get their 84 hours. Working the step grants volunteer, it's not mandatory, it's nothing like that, the states say this is your money, come out here, we want to enforce these laws, the city's not telling you you have to do it. Therefore, if you don't meet your obligations, or the city meet that, can you get a more time? You just, you just pretty much.
So, all right, so how do y'all schedule your, I mean, you've got your regular schedule, all of y'all have a basic regular schedule, correct?
Yeah, right.
And then you take that step grant time after that, correct?
Yeah. You can work step grant, even like, I come out from page four, and I'll stay two cities, and I'll get two hours in that day. And as long as I don't miss any time in that two-year period, anything that.
Oh, your regular time.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you have to be on the radar for it. You can't be vacation, sick, or.
You have to actually be working that.
Yeah, you, you have to be, you have to physically be, be working, be that. It's just like when you have any other overtime, it's off.
Mike, you gotta have your four hours.
If you're not, if you don't meet the, if you don't meet your hours, you don't get paid for that.
And one other, I see y'all got donations from first service? For a thousand dollars? Is that earmarked for something?
That was earmarked for boots.
For boots, okay, okay. Perfect. Oh, I have on that, that's, let me see, oh, I have to, that was here. And they're answered, okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Actually, I can Google our finances.
Melissa. So this is the first paper we got on 4.4, with all the different shortages. Okay, well, this has, this has all of the payroll shortages, according to what we have been told is, you know, the transfer department directly from the departments to the general fund. All right, so page one is the first page of the, on 4.4. The total amounts for each department are quite high. The second paper, they are. Wait, 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 one word, okay.
Yes.
What, why do they?
Okay, the second one. If you remember, the very first one, and I wanted y'all to talk about half of it, was probably your payroll. Do you remember that?
Right.
Okay. And it was, the payroll, I sent you guys up as a payroll fund. Therefore, all of your payroll liabilities in my system were going to the general fund. But that's not actually how y'all were doing it. You were actually paying them from the police, or the street, or the law. So I called the software company and had them go out and take out those payroll liabilities from your, your general fund, financial segment, and that was 170-something thousand dollars. But we were still 240-something at a loss, which would probably be you about right on track, because we were 167,000 dollars in 2023. In 2024, I believe y'all made two raises to a dollar apiece. Let those raises go increases in taxes, and all of that good stuff for the city and the employee. And also, your retirement goes up every year in July by five percent. Also, usually about every January, your health insurance goes up. And this year, you guys added, all of you guys, little things, that 240 is probably about right on track.
Over the last meeting, or meeting, I don't remember, um, there was discussion about how each department was gonna have to pay the general fund back a certain amount. That's still correct?
Yes, and no. Yes, they do owe that, but then you've got ones that didn't pay, didn't transfer home. But there's also the other part of the payroll stuff that was taken care of by the general fund. Really, they kind of wash each other out. If you want to do that, you can, it'll just help the general fund, but it'll hurt these other ones. Right now, y'all are kind of at a good place, if you look at your current financials. There's only one fund that is operating at a loss, and it's the street. So that is really up to y'all, whether you want to do that or not. It won't fix your 2024 numbers, it'll just make your 2025 look really good. Well, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you that question here. When it showed that we were at such a loss for 2024, does that not need to carry over as a negative number to begin our 2025 budget? Or, I mean, how do you, how do you go from a negative number, whether it's 400,000 or $40? And. It was a loss. I realize. But you had money in your checking account. It's just that every year that you operate that way, you will eat that cushion, and that is what is happening. So now, that's why we made all those cuts and those monthly transfers, and now you are not operating at a loss as of May.
The city wasn't, well, the money was just out of all city. We had money there, not right. I understand what you're saying.
You're calling Peter to pay call, everyone.
The councilor, ever in the negative, like the actual.
Right, here's, not over it, that it covered it, but we are at a loss, if we keep doing it, then the city will get that.
So you didn't really have a carryover for.
Yes, we just went over budget.
A budget loss.
It's a budgeted loss, not an actual monetary loss.
Well.
I mean, that's the reason.
Like, if you wanted to.
Operating is.
And I understand that, I understand that, but when you go, I mean, when you exceed your budget.
Every year.
Every year.
But then you're gonna be, then eventually, you're gonna eat it all up.
Yes, yes. And apparently, we've eaten most of it up. Right. So that was the reasoning for cutting those transfers down and doing all that stuff, was to. The spending of, you know.
Yeah, we're just trying to.
Was to help build.
I'm like, I mean, we can't fix it.
No, no, there's nothing, no, there's no way to go back and fix it.
No, it's, it's just a.
Yes, absolutely, and that's, I think. On this round, is to try to alleviate this from happening in 2025. Like I said, I just, you know, amend in the budget and, you know, eating the cushion and what have you, you know, that's, yeah, I think. Any way of saying we spent too much money. Thirty thousand something dollars in the. That would have been what your carryover would have been.
Well, yeah, I know our, our budget, you know, our carryover for 2024 was 280,000.
Yeah, which was not right.
What?
Which was not right.
Well, and then 25, the carryover budget was 20,000.
Yeah, that's probably more accurate.
But going into the different areas, what we hear in the spending.
Yes.
Like, the variables in the spending, talking about transfers, there was transfers, for whatever reason, that, that just did not go away.
No.
Another, another two areas that did not transfer away, that, that general paid quite a bit, but that was, was not fit to that particular time that went undone. So, but, but let's, if, if you're, yeah, if you blanket it, we can say spending, but let's, let's bring it down to the point, it wasn't just like we had a pot of money, and we just went out there, and just because we had a pot of money, the bank account just went and just got what we want. That's not the tax.
But the, given the $2 raise, and with everything else that goes up every year, like it does, that will happen.
Yes.
Yeah, I figured, I know exactly, that adds up too, because I figured it a number of times.
Oh, I mean, you've got additional employees, you've got additional time, you've got all the way around.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so I lost a whole lot of sleep over all this, so.
So I'm not very smart, but I guess, if them numbers ain't right, why are they on that?
I'm sorry, I've been thinking about you, I didn't hear your question.
I said, the way I understood it, y'all was talking about them numbers ain't right, so why aren't they posted on the paper for them to look at? Them numbers.
Yeah, we've heard that a number of times, that, you know, we're just, the numbers aren't correct. Well, we just need to make, and, and Melissa, I'm, I'm, you're saying, you get, you put in what you get, okay?
I did, and it's partly making, and it's on.
You know, so, you know, we've got to make sure that, so moving forward, we put the correct information in on the all, so now everybody. Now we have a payroll fund, it's not mixed in with our general fund, so you won't see that kind of stuff. Of the. Okay. Well, that's what we're hoping, you know, that's, I mean. Me too.
It is, it is tied, driving very specific what comes out of payroll. It's not, I would say, we just assess this, the general fund acted as a payroll account, but kind of not completely, it was.
It didn't.
It was. But it is very, very dry and, I mean, very specific. I give the transfers to Penny, that's what, you know, her department, it wasn't giving a spreadsheet, so when I just might pay, we were, but it is literally to the penny, it is one cent off. I called her, we look at, you know, the different sites, she would say, if you're rounding, we note take that, so there's no more of this, that's transferred, I need it to the penny, every single one. Like I said, if it was one cent off, cents off, we experiment, if you're rounding, and guys, we're sticking there, so, to the penny.
More questions for Melissa?
I do kind of have a question. Do we still get the Act 833 come from the fire department? I don't think they've done it yet. Because it's kind of in line.
It's submitted every June, so it'll be a little bit, a couple of months before we get our Act 833, it's normally, uh, third or fourth of a year before we get it.
So it gets passed later in the year? So it comes later in the year, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I didn't see any income for that this time.
Ms. Martin, to answer your question on that, I can give it to you tomorrow, I have your sales tax transfers and everything marketing right now, so all the.
We can wait till Friday, that's fine.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know.
No.
That way it'll be certain penny.
Okay.
Well, some of the penny was there in the papers.
Yeah, that, no, that's fine, Friday's fine.
I have another question, sorry. Uh, I was correcting my wrong, last month, I'm glad you asked, someone had said that the fire truck fund, the fire truck building was no, it was, but now it is again?
No, 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 so I got mine a month ago, so they are no longer now, so when I, what month is that?
Whatever. That's one through.
Yes, so they, so they did have one more month than what I bought it, but, um, essentially, for the building fund, more matter, isn't, or this, because we're gonna use that for the repair anyways, but I spoke with Chief Anna, just once a year, we form in that, but they did, it will already process it, and install them, so they did one for another one, but.
I don't think that.
No, 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 they, I spoke with, uh, with.
The state of the bank.
Yes. State of the care.
Is there, is, and maybe, Chief Anna, you can tell, tell me this, is the fire truck fund and the building fund something that's supposed to be accumulated every month? Is there ordinance or anything that says?
Not on the wicked one.
Remember the number?
What, about the fire truck building? Yes, that's how the one-cent sales tax was passed for the whole city. Back in the nineties, 92, 93?
92.
92. The city was trying to pass the one-cent sales tax, but prior to that, they did not have sales tax anymore. It was going, okay, but in order to get it passed, the volunteer firefighters went door to door and spoke with the citizens to get it passed. In return, they got a quarter cent of that sales tax, and this was all in order, written in ordinance. That has been their funding prior to the new sales tax that was passed. In that ordinance, it stated, a quarter cent went to the fire department. When the fire department received that, at whatever time of the month, $1,500 was to be taken out and put in a fund for fire truck purchases. Another 500 was to be taken out and put in a building fund, that was used toward a new building, or if new buildings weren't done, it was to be put toward capital or major repairs, like we would replace saw lighting, or we would, like when we did our. or we would, like when we did our education equipment, we would go to the council and get approval to use a portion of it to complete that transaction. Different things, but yes, it was all in ordinance. And the ordinance stated that the money that was in the fire department general fund was to be used for equipment, supplies, and daily operations. So wherever this ordinance has went, I don't know, but yes. That's how the city got their first one, since sales tax to support the city was our.
Mayor, perhaps we can get with the circuit clerk. Ordinances as such for some taxes, they should be recorded in the clerk's office. What's been raised is a significant deal. That's something that we need, we collectively, the city, and such, need to have a clear understanding. I, I don't doubt anyone's recollection as to what was voted on. Be that as it may, if we are using sales tax dollars for a purpose not what the people voted for, then that's a significant problem. So we need to find that out for sure as to what the ordinance calling the election and what the people, the ballot title that the people actually voted on. We just need to be fully sure, have that in our heads in some way. Like a second, clerk's office. Unless it's things differently in ninety-two, those sorts of things get recorded in clerk's office. Probably let us start there. And then we'll, if, if that is a dry hole, then we'll have to figure something else out, but we have to get that figured out.
I have another question. Rich, did you say fifteen hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the transfers, like I said, at this point, weren't able because they weren't in the budget. Obviously, we have to go by the, for the budget. So they have to be reinstated, or everything, I'm thinking of saying, to do that after all this research is done, kind of time. But the transfers that we handled, they don't have to be five hundred dollars. So five hundred each, so the price, they're not fair. Not on the.
That's where the budget for gas will come in.
Right. Yeah. Twenty-two.
So it wasn't even on the budget?
If it is fifteen hundred and, and five hundred, then the amounts have been skewed at some point in time.
It's maybe two and a half.
Twenty-nine, two, twenty-five.
Okay, it's there.
So my question is, if we didn't find that out, is there going to be that pay?
I'm not gonna make the budget.
So. I'm just saying, if we, I mean, if we didn't make the payments, it sounds like we will have to.
We had this issue previously. Back when we were, um, I don't want to use names. We were one America the other, and we had some major issues happen similar to this. Um, ordinance disappeared at that point also. Amazingly, a few months later, it reappeared. And at that point in time, yes, there was that pay, the red state that. Um, there were some calls made at the state about it by some of our previous firefighters. And because of the ordinance, they had to reimburse them.
So.
I'm not, I'm not trying to disturb them, I'm just, because this happened, I, I always.
I think that's, Chief correct me, that's what was that five hundred dollars when I was on the council every month? And then we paid that in full. At the, I think, then the one year was, but we paid that in full, that's what we do, is pay a monthly payment to the fire department.
You were right, Richie.
Yes. We used on there too, and, and we finished, we finished that, and we made the, we finished, you know, a month some, because we needed some hair. We will search for that.
And then we need.
We will search for that ordinance.
We need to include Melissa and Jessica in this discussion. We're aligned with you. And then Mac out.
Sam, I'll just add that I came to work there at the time that that was passed. My first month here at the time of the sales tax. And that was a major ordeal, I don't know where the ordinance is or what's going on, but that's how it's set out.
I look at this in, in, in two distinct areas. One, what the people voted on.
And that's what they did.
That's the bigger concern I have.
Yeah.
The second, if, and again, we can't be paying things unless we've got something on paper that says we gotta pay it. And so if that exists, then I think the stakeholders, and I don't want to, the stakeholders, council, Jessica, Melissa, fire department sit down and say, all right, how do we solve this going forward? That's doable. If we're not doing precisely what the sales tax ordinance says, then that's a massive problem. So one second. We got the.
Well, we were not, and we did pay that back.
Let me, I, matter of fact, I have another ninety seconds.
It was through Gerald that it was paid back.
So let, let me drill down on, I've talked all around it, just let me drill down on the issue that really concerns me. It is exceedingly rare for a sales tax to be voted on to be directed for an ongoing general purpose. Normally, when you're voting on sales tax, and when I say voting on sales tax, you're voting in enacted ordinance, in ballot title, the ballot title says this is gonna go to X. It is exceedingly rare for that to happen, exceedingly rare. Our Supreme Court has been painfully clear, if the people vote on a tax for a particular purpose, if the money doesn't go for that purpose, then it's a violation. Potential illegal exaction, things along those lines. Example would be the pool in Mountain Home. When the people of Mountain Home voted on the pool in nineteen ninety-one, nineteen eighty-nine, somewhere in there, ballot title said it's gonna go for a pool. Well, they go to the pool, still collected the money. They get sued, lawyers get a million five. And then the people have receipts for the sales tax they paid, they get their money back. But we just don't believe in that spot. That's why it's important. You have to find what the people voted on first, person wants. Second, then, you know, obviously, there's some issue with regarding the fire department thing, I mean, we have to find that somewhat. Um, at the risk of my friends in the fire department throwing tomatoes at me. It needs to be found, if it's not found, then we can't be paying things unless we can find our obligation to pay it. Just what it gets right down to. Hopefully, it's in the records here, might be recorded at the clerk's, it might be recorded in yellow, but we need to find those things.
We'll, we'll start a little. Any more questions for Melissa? And, oh, Chief Hannah?
Okay, so to clarify, like, the city's sales tax, it says thirty thousand dollars. And that fifteen hundred, five hundred goes to the, uh, building fund, and a thousand goes to the truck fund. Because the budget concerns this year, we often not put that money into those two accounts, they still exist, they're still there. We didn't put them in there this year because money was hot. So it's not like we're not knowing what's supposed to, you say that the fire department can get on seven five hundred, billion, five hundred truck fund. It still exists, and it's still there. But it's not an issue of repaying it, it would be an issue for missing parts about this, we discussed in the last meeting. Several companies might have to do that and sort it up. Apparently, there is twenty-five thousand dollars in building fund and the truck fund, I'm not sure about. But the majority of that money doesn't pay the truck, it was done before by the. And hopefully, this year, the taxes settle out, the building settles out, we can back it, and I'm gonna back it, but that was discussed. So we'll find the budget. So, get that clarified then.
We'll, we'll, we'll look tomorrow for that, for that, for how we can say.
So do we? Excuse, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Do we know when payments were stopped?
Have they been stopped, or are you still getting your payments, that's what I'm.
No, no, the, the money.
The transfers?
Okay, the tran.
We said the transfers.
Fire department gets twenty-five percent of the one cent sales tax every month.
There's still, yeah, there's sales tax.
And that's where the fifteen hundred, five hundred, okay. When did the transfer from the fire department general to the truck fund, the building fund stop? That's what I'm asking.
They just, they just stopped.
Just, yeah. They just have to have them on this one.
This one.
Okay.
So it's something that would be easier.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Yeah.
And they were just sending to our thousands.
Okay. So this, for the one from ninety-two, somewhere down the line, Rich, that did get stopped, and then it was found, and it was, that's what we paid back to.
Right, and the repayment on the, the previous time this all happened?
Yes.
The repayments and stuff started while JJ was still in there.
Right.
Because it was a, it was a feud between some council members and some ex-council members and, and some ex-firefighters, and it was just a mess.
And it was finalized.
And then it all got straightened out again, and we got it all back on track, like we usually do.
Yeah, the payments that, that was missed from that ninety-two was finalized with Gerald. He, he finally.
Yeah, it finally got paid.
Yeah, it got paid off.
Paid off, right. Yes.
Am I wrong? So he said he paid that money, the city kept the money, but not by the government, right? That's why they had to pay that money.
Because it's state and general.
Yeah, state and general.
Right. And it also got tied in too, because there was a big feud over payroll. Um, on whether payroll could be paid out of fire department general or out of city general. And at that time, that's the first time that that ordinance disappeared before it reappeared, was when that feud was gone. Uh, because the original ordinance said daily operations, and that's where that originally came from.
So Sam, the only thing that we would owe would be five, would be five hundred dollars for. Thank you.
While we're talking, there's a negative starting stuff, we go.
Any more questions for Melissa?
I'll chance I can find something.
Thank you, Melissa.
Come on.
Sam, did you want to go over, you said these things, uh, next, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go into J L's stuff.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Mr. Council, uh, Mayor Huglin got with me last week and had, we, we had to go and had some questions about where we stood on the hiring.
Not right on that part, probably his items, probably the, of the purchase items.
Oh, okay.
So we're good?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I, I thought you meant the.
Then we'll get to that, I'm just gonna go through his stuff, and then this week we'll get to that. Nate, you got, yeah, the, I'm gonna let Ame to stand and kind of do a little bit. We're going to, uh, need from the Arkansas Department of Agriculture, need the council's approval uh, for a two point five, uh, million dollar loan for to enact water project that's coming after the sewer project. Uh, that has to be passed by, uh, the city council. Do you have any, yeah, you have any?
No, I think.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure of it, but.
To explain procedure, Nate, why that work.
Um, so of course, we went way over budget, we had bid for our water project. Um, we're actually four million of, um, the most that we could take out as a loan. Um, but it's the two point five, anything more than that, we would have to do a break in the business, we would all need that. Um, the two point five is as big as we can go, we need that in order to keep our lowest bidder. Um, because we can only cut out so much of the project when we have to rebid it. And if we have to rebid it, we're in the long term. Um, because the lowest bidder was, he was significantly lower than the other bidder. Um, we are trying to, um, secure some more funding. Um, we're working, working out with some people, um, trying to secure more funding so we can complete the entire project, and it would all be a hundred percent growth. But, um, we already got all the paperwork drawn up, we talked to Trey, both our engineers have went over everything. Um, we will not have to raise other rates or do anything different for at least the next three to four years. Um, if we take on this loan, um. And if we do not get this two point five million dollar loan, we'll have to scrap the whole time.
Something they've already had to bid, so we want this, I want to act to be able to, we'll do it. Another reason to apply, another entity, not available money and things, so this is going, what would enact and begin uh, the water project, having the sewer project is.
Are there, are there any grants yet for this water project?
Any grants? Um, we got five point nine million in grant for this project right.
That's gonna cost a hundred and four million.
Yes. Because we were four million over when we went to bid, and that's what our grant and part of the funding that we had told. But they will only allow us to cut out about two million of the project. So about two point five million in the project is all we're allowed to cut out to award this bid. If we cut out any more, we have to go back to it, and there's, no way we'll ever get this good of a day.
Yes, especially in the economy.
And we're up, we're actually past our sixty days to, um, award the bid. We were supposed to already award it and things, but we've been, we've been trying to secure more funding in different places. We got real excited, we were talking to Chelsea and their team over, um, we thought that we might be able to get a four million dollar grant, um, but the timeline, there is no way it was gonna work. We are still applying for it, um, but it can take anywhere from three months to eighteen months to even find out if we can do it. So it is, it's not feasible, um, to help us now.
I think it was similar to the wastewater project, we had to cut, we had to cut part of the wastewater project, and we ended up, we did part of the money to get it.
Another one for that.
But if you cut too much, you, you can only cut a certain percentage out of your, of your, of your proposed job to do, and still retain your grants and stuff like that is what it is. That's why we had to shorten it up, going east, that's why we had to shorten that project of, of the wastewater project.
How much did we have to shorten it up?
We were, uh, there by cabinet, uh, mayor. Yeah, even captains, we stopped there, we were originally gonna go all the way out to the old building, but it just wasn't. We were originally gonna go all the way out to the old buildings here, but it just wasn't with the funding and the way the bids and stuff came in. And then we ended up cutting out of the council. Where we had to cut it.
I have something to ask on that. Um, my home is right at the edge of the city limits. It was inside of the city limits and at the beginning of this project, I was told that everybody inside the city limits was gonna get sewer. Um, I do not currently have any wastewater. And I was told square, square in the face that you, you don't get this because you're in the city limits. Couple of months later, I was told you're not getting it, you're not in the city limits. Um, unfortunately, I believed them. And then when they came to give me my business, uh, they wanted me to do the city, to that, like renew my, what is it, my business license and I ran them out, my thoughts. Um, to the fire chief for that, I should have really listened to what he said and it was just last week that I actually looked at the map and I am in the city limits and I feel like the grant, the legalese of the grant says everybody inside of the city limits. I've been told that I'm not getting sewer on two properties I own. I have two failed septic systems that I'm gonna have to pay twenty grand to replace. And I'm not happy. And I'm like, like I want written documentation of the legal, like all the grades. Because a grade, if I understand correctly, a grade is, is very specific. Cut this or that, whoever gave you the grant is gonna come back and audit and legally, if you don't do what is in it, they can take away all your funding for everything. Like, and you're making me pay them. It's very serious.
The thing what happened, Ms. Johnson, in the very beginning, when we had this project all together, our plans were that everybody on the east end, that was our plan, that's why I said. Our plan was that everybody on the east end, according to that project, was gonna be able to be hooked into this sewer project. But if the council will remember, we was at that meeting and then when we came back to the table, uh, Scott, you and Anita helped me. But we came back to the table, there were some numbers that changed that, that just went completely crazy and went high.
And that's fine, as long, in, in, as long as in the legalese of the grant, that it doesn't say everybody in the city of Clinton gets it. But I want written documentation, whether I need to go out and get it from FOIA, um, I, I'm more than happy to do that. We, as I said, told, everybody in the city limits is supposed to have sewer, water, in a paper. Legally. So I, I want, I wanna debate it, I want legal proof and I want all the documents. So I want all the funding, all the grants for the last five years is what I want, starting from, not five years, starting from twenty-four years. Or I want my sewer debt.
So what we're saying is you're not the only one that was not able to get it this go around.
Well, actually, as far as the city limits go, there's a cabin bakers, their business. Then there is, um, A W Gas, their business. And then there's my home. So I believe, I don't know about the other side of town, but I'm the only residential place that did not get it at least on my end of it. And I, my property is actually at the line, like it is, like I'm at the end. I'm not over it, but I am in the city limits and I don't have city sewer. And that's an issue.
Yep. How many did, did we come up with, Scott, Nate, that did not? That we had to cut the cost of the money?
Yeah, there was probably ten, those fifteen, probably the others though. But now as far as city limits bound to drive out, I was not.
All right. With this business hanging with the council. One is your pleasure. Because if this is not passed out of council tonight, the law will be not broken.
We have to have this signed and returned by July fifteenth thirty-seven, that year. The whole project. That's the new water tower, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, it's the entire project, the ranger and. Like I said, we are trying to secure other funding, which is none of it is gonna be feasible if we can't get it in the time that we need. We've been.
We're either getting more funding since we went over bid and it's, it's. Is the, the reason it's over budget, what our bid is because of price increases in equipment parts and is that what, is that what the majority of this is? It's just.
A lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, same with wastewater project.
Same, yeah. How old are the water lines?
I got some.
There's probably still some of the originals.
Oh, they're made?
I'll do a meet too.
So our biggest issue, we don't have enough volume. It's not necessarily that our pipes are bad, that, you know, we, we're tired of picks and leaks, it's not that. We do not have enough volume to supply people in, um, our tower. Only has like a two and a half hour routine, you know, that's all we got. If we have a massive major leak, we have about two hours in this whole town, we'll have one.
For fire.
Yeah. You know, as of right now, whenever we do have a major water leak, it sets off alarms, a ranger at the churches, a vexedus, um, sets off fire alarms because they don't have enough pressure to use a fire suppression. You know, we have, we have extensive issues and it's not because of the, the water lines themselves, they're just not big enough. And.
Is this, can I say, uh, I don't know if there's a connection or not, but all the fire hydrants that have white lags on them, I'd take it are out of service?
Yes.
Is this connected, is this part of fixing those or is those online, we fix for four days?
Well, part of the project is to be kind of up to code standard and have fire hydrants everywhere, supposed to have a water hydrant. But our, we have a contract with the gentleman, um, that comes in, he services our, our hydrants, make sure they're all in good working order. There was a little bit of a mix-up. He was supposed to already be here and fix all that because it's been hung up and everything. Not all of them, they're just not necessarily reliable. It's not that they won't work, but they're, they're not ness-. You might go be using it and it might not shut off.
There is not masking, because our insurance guy stopped in our office today because he was driving through Clinton and he saw the lags on the water hydrants and he really wanted to know how quick because all our buildings are rated on those water hydrants.
Um, I will call him tonight and find out, because he was supposed to be here like three weeks ago. Um, before that, he was supposed to be here, something before that. Um, what he did is he sent us a list. Um, there was a mix-up when he was coming, he was sending an email, um, but it wasn't going through the, the PDF or whatever, it wasn't what he sent. And, uh, we would actually come across, they were at a fire one night, we were snowpiling, couldn't get a hydrant open. We went to go try to open it, couldn't get it open. I called in that night, like, it's like three o'clock in the morning, I called it, I'm like, what is going on? What gave you the service fees? And, uh, there's a mix-up. There, I think there's only actually two that do not work. The rest of them are just, they, they need some assistance, but the whole of it was all those were gonna be replaced with this project. Expensive a lot of money, instead of spending a whole bunch of money to go in and fix them, when we're gonna do this water project and they're all gonna be replaced.
So they were gonna have a white lager room to let it be replaced.
No, he was supposed to be here like almost two months ago to remove this.
Okay.
But they're not.
Because the insurance guy tested it, they're out of service.
Yeah, they're, they're actually only five percent.
And their question is, do we need to increase our rates because there's no other protection in the states if they're in.
Well, so from your office, they're hired by your.
Yeah, and it's.
The other one right there by your.
Yeah, the one by your.
By your.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one was the best. Give it a moment.
The one by.
Well, he told us.
Wait, the one by there?
He thought it was froze.
No, but the city guys used to drag the main one and fix the main line three weeks before he put back over for a month.
Yeah, I, he, he told me he thought they froze because they were leaking.
Okay.
And he thought that they'd actually froze up.
My concern is just, it's getting to the point of somebody built a few arms or their house burned and one of those hydrants is back and isn't used.
Well, I can go to the office, I can grab that list and actually go remove.
No, I'm just.
It was a confusing deal.
I'm not complaining, I'm just giving.
I totally get exactly what you're saying. It was just, he said he would make sure, you know, he was gonna go through each one and make sure the ones that are actually out of service are the only ones. But he keeps that in the way of coming. So I will call him whenever I leave here and I will grab the list and I will go remove any bad, so I don't want working much. It's just they're not necessarily reliable, um, in the fact that you might turn it on and it might sit there and leak really bad afterwards. It won't shut all the way whenever you go to leak. You know, I think there's only two, I think, that are actually just completely out of service.
Yeah, okay. If we can, I appreciate it, we can get back to this, we've, we've got, we've got several items still remaining. I entertain a motion, counsel.
I'll make a motion to allow them, allow water to proceed with, the loan, of two point five million.
I have a motion, proceed with the two point five billion dollar loan for the water project, and I have a second.
I have a question. On this other grant money, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling here with, I mean, I, I know that it's gotta be done and the other grant money that we could possibly get, can you pay, can we use that to pay that loan off?
No, we can't. But we can use that money to complete the project that we had to cut down, like Jennifer.
Okay, here.
Uh, she, we had to cut out, um, because we just simply did not have the funding. You know, and that's why we have to give you the project. We don't want to have to do that again, you know, so we might be able to get this, this funding to be able to complete the project because we had to cut a lot out of the project.
When you borrow more money, you can't finish your first project. Like, I, I don't, I guess I don't put this statement out there.
Two different projects.
Two different projects. I know, but you can't successfully be on budget and complete one with the grants given. Why would you just move to the next?
Well, I have a question, like, so we did run out of money for the sewer project. And so we got a bid on that sewer project. Are they not, do, they not have to hold to that bid? I mean, and how did we run out of money if we got a bid?
We had, we, we, so what I'm saying. We had, we had the scope of the project drawn up and then I, I thought that's the way it happened.
Because I'm, I'm wondering, so if we pass this to, you know, this with the, the grants and the additional two point five million for twenty years, and what if we get to, uh, the end of the project, like what has happened with the sewer and we run out of money again? What, I mean, how, how do we stop that? Or, I mean, if I get a bid for my roof, I'm, I'm getting, you know, on a smaller scale, if I get a bid for my roof and the guy comes back and says, no, you still owe me three thousand dollars, I'm gonna go, no, I know, you gave me a bid.
I guess, I guess the way, the way I would explain it is that we get our project drawn to our engineer and he tells us relatively what the price of the project is gonna be. And then that's when we actually get the bids from the people to do the project. Well, if we don't have enough funding for that, that if we can't secure, because all those bids came in higher than what we could secure. So then, that's why we had to cut part of the project.
So like the engineer didn't give you a bid that told you exactly how much you needed, is that what?
Yes, but by the, but by the time that the project came about, because we've been working on the wastewater project for years.
Yeah.
And by the time that we started and by the time that it actually got going, those costs went way up. And we didn't have a bid.
On the two and a half, on that part, that is secured. That's already in this man's, that were, that had the lowest bid. That two and a half, that, that will complete that part of the project. He can't ask for any money, more money. He said he would do it for this amount. We cut the amount that we put in the board out of it. The two and a half, that is secured. He has to complete all that's in that scope. So he can't come back and be like, oh, well, I don't have enough money anymore for you guys to complete this. So I'm wondering, how come that didn't happen?
Because of time. Because of the time.
Well, how do we know we're gonna make the time period this time?
They already, they already, they already got.
The bid is open and we're ready to award the bid and he can't, he cannot lose on that being that he can't.
I think grades are there as well. Yes, you tell, what was the grade amount on that?
Five point nine million and lots of difference.
But that's already been completed.
We got that.
Yeah, that's all secured right now for the project. We have about eight, eight million secured for the project. Um, and we were still four million under what the lowest bid was.
But doesn't the grant give like a specific, the grant should be very specific on what has to be included in it? Whether it's the wastewater or what you guys are, or concrete. Otherwise the grant.
Yeah, I know, we have people way smarter than us that handle all this, our engineers and.
Got our engineer that takes care of all that.
Our funding agencies and everything.
And, and all of that. They were, we had meetings, we have update meetings and everything that got all of that taken care of.
So, okay, so then let me go back and ask as far as the wastewater, what exactly did it say? What was covered, what was covered in the grant?
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, we explained that, the procedure, what we had to go through. We can talk about that at a later time, I've got business at hand, right now, okay? You can come to the office, I'll be glad to be able to visit and get you the appropriate people that will be able to give you the answer that you're, that you're needing.
I, I mean, I, I'll just get a FOIA. I'll request a FOIA.
All right, counsel, I have a, I have a motion uh, to accept the proceeds of the project two point five million. Just a second.
I have one more thing. When will this start? When will this loan, when the, will this, the repayment of this loan start before the water project starts?
No. No, I don't think we'll start making payments on this. And of course I don't have that funding. Um, Trey, our engineer, he went over, I don't think we'll start six on repayment of the loan. six on repayment of the loan. Um, but we were gonna go ahead and hold the funds out to just kind of start holding it out now. Um, but we wouldn't have to, I don't think our first payment will be until the funding comes out. But I can, I can find that out and give you the details of it, but...
Is there a rough estimate of when this water project is going to start? I know it's gonna be after the sewer project's finished. Before this, is that...
They are two totally different projects. No, we're actually, should have already, you know, ruined this bid when they should have already started. Um, we've been, he, the, the man that got the lowest bid has been very working with us, um, because we have been trying since we walked away from those tables. Um, and realized that we did not have enough funds. We've been desperately trying to secure those funds. Um, and we did not want to take out a loan. We were trying so hard not to need another one. Um, but he's been patient waiting for us to get this sewer enough funding to cut out part of the project in order to continue and to at least get, you know, the majority of the project done.
Okay, so with additional grants that we've talked about and what's been cut out, will those additional, will that grant money that we could possibly get secure more of the pro, of the, of the project? You know, what you've cut out, is there a possibility that that's what that money is going to?
That's what, that's what we were gonna try. Now, we originally thought that we were gonna be able to get this funding before we had to take out the fund. Actually, our law attorney, we had him drag the paperwork for this. Because we had high hopes we were gonna get this grant, because we were told that we were on top of the list, which is exactly what they're wanting to do. But then we found out that their process is way too long for us. We just, um, he can't, he can't hold it for that long. And we even discussed scrapping the project, going back to bid. But I think it's way too big of a gamble, because one of our bids, the lowest bidder was eight million. The majority of the other bids were fifteen. And now that they all know how much it was, there's no way we'll ever get that good of a gamble. What's going on?
If, when you go to the bid, it'll need more money, usually.
Yeah, I don't have the main thing going down.
And then, and then I'll become law and say that you have to start the grant process over.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to start it.
Start all grant process over again.
But they are fairly certain that we can get this money, but we cannot use it to pay off existing loans, even if it's one that we just took out.
Right.
You cannot use it to pay off this same project.
Well, I'm just asking this, can we pay the, can we make the loan payment?
Yes.
How much is the payment?
Uh, we don't know how much payments are, uh, to be honest with you.
We just paid off they want, they want.
Well, they wanted to, and that was something else I think was on his agenda to bring to you is, once again, we're wanting to go to Neil, we're gonna call this time and pay off that loan. We have not paid it off yet.
But that's a, that's a plan that you have.
Yes, we're gonna pay it off.
Yes.
Yes. And I, so Trey has went through the numbers. He's way smarter than me, okay? I could look at it, look at it, look at it all day long. I'm gonna trust him. He says that we can afford it, he says that it's not gonna hurt us, and he says that we won't have to raise our rates. You know, and I trust him over anything I'm gonna sit there and try to do with the calculators, so.
So let's compose of those rate study, when they got, when they do that rate study and we have that meeting, that, that's what applies to that of loans and different things to the loan project.
Yeah, because we had to contact him to see if we would have to do another rate study, which we did not.
Counsel, I have a motion for a year, I need a second.
I'll send it.
I have a second. Any more discussion? Mayor Daniel, need a little call from this vote.
Okay, good, real quick.
What, I'll just, go ahead.
I didn't know that I was gonna do the one on your talking and help. I can get y'all any information you need tomorrow about numbers and everything. I just wasn't prepared for that, I'm sorry.
Margaret.
Ms. Scott's got a question.
Ms. Scott, Scott.
I was just on, on that issue too. I've not been in every meeting with wastewater all the way. But everything that I've focused the best in my knowledge is water, how things work.
Well, Trey and Trey's, I mean, I, I trust Trey. I mean, I know that, you know, there's, he's got a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge. That's all I can go on.
You have a...
Yes. I mean...
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Mayor, while we're talking water, we talk of JL's employment situation.
Yes.
I need to scoot. Okay, so members of the council, Mayor Hogan reached out to me, that's me, before, and had a discussion on hiring freezes. And I had a recollection that initially we said that for somebody that was essential, what have you, that spot could be filled. In my mind, I feel like we had a discussion in a subject with mine that said, "No, we're not gonna fill anybody." In extra, I come to the council and ask. Uh, I think there's minutes from what month, Mayor, March, April? I was about to say somewhere in there, that probably goes to where we would allow filling an existing vacant by direction to the mayor, if the mayor agreed that it was just best to bring it before you tonight. Because the mayor has one recollection, I have another. I think ultimately, with the spirit of what was decided, was if there was to be a, an existing position filled, a discussion would have come to the council about it. My recollection.
Yeah, there's a hiring freeze. Nope. If you lose somebody, too bad. Unless, unless it comes to council and we, we agree on it, then that's, that's fine.
Okay, so that, that's, that's the group's recollection as well then? That we have a hiring freeze if there's somebody that needs to be hired, person come before the council, okay?
On that note, Susan Colling appeared last month with a grievance letter and addressed the council. And since her position was dissolved because of budgetary constraints, my question is, why was a job offered to her since she lost her job? And if she would entertain, you know, taking this part-time position, I mean, I don't know why it wasn't offered to her first. As, I mean, I'm sure that they knew they were going, I think they were talking about one person leaving. So that's my question, because I don't feel like her grievance letter was ever really addressed properly.
And I can't answer that because I don't get into hiring decisions, but I, I think that's the sort of question to be asked to JL or whomever in, in the Water Department as to why we see the...
And I'm sorry if I'm overstepping, but Susan, I think we talked about you stepping in for David once you left. And from my understanding, it was not something you wanted to do, and forgive me if I am wrong.
No, this was then offered to me. My grievance wasn't really based on that. However, normal procedures with somebody's risk reducing force, face home, budgetary, financial, whatever. And then a, a available position comes up that you're qualified for, and the position that came up was actually my old position that I left to become the HR representative. It would have improved me, it would have been the normal business practice, yes, to offer me that position. But that's kind of out of the park. But that, let me just, let me just go with it. That's just kind of the nature of our whole relationship and, and process, so. I, you know, that's my answer to you. So, that's where I'm at.
God, excuse me.
Sammy, come on, right? What, Sammy, come on, right?
Oh, me too. No, don't, don't, yes, yes, come on.
Oh, I have either.
I have either.
So I don't know, I don't know. I guess I'm asking you, Sam, on her grievance last, uh, last council meeting. I don't feel like it was ever really proper to offer you that.
Okay, uh, so with regards, I haven't seen any in, in what way.
Well, I don't think it was, anything was, I mean, I feel like it was never really, you know, she never received an apology or, you know, I feel like she should have received something for coming and expressing her heartfelt what happened to her and how she felt. I just feel like she needed an apology or something.
The thing about it is, what was before us, I was told, present a positive budget. I presented four, four different times, I presented a positive budget. One of the workshops, I said, I even can merge some positions. Ms. Howard, you told me, look, and she said, that is, you said, "That is your decision." But at that particular time, I did not do any merging. So we went into another workshop and then we went into another council meeting that y'all, y'all were not happy with a, the budget process of what I presented you as a positive budget, which I am required to do. And, and when, and when then I decided, I said, "This is what we're gonna do." I cut, I cut some hours and then I said, "We will dissolve the HR position," and, and I did that. And, um,
If, if...
Unless what I get?
If, if I could hear Jay. Well, Councilwoman Howard, what I hear, I, I hear 1.5 figure. One of which is, well, no, actually, that you as a member of the council have a perspective on how the grievance was handled.
Right.
Which, I think it is well within your prerogative as a council member to say, "Hey, this is the way I think it should have been." At the end of the day. I don't know that there's much that can be done otherwise, but certainly within a person's prop again to say, "Hey, she brought this up. She brought this up, this is what we felt should have occurred." And as far as being able to do anything else off the top of my head, I don't know. I, 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 I just don't know. One last thing before I go, and I hate to, I'm gonna call him another thing. Sammy Seerock and Gerald Herbert. In the next, I would ask the council to consider in the next couple of months what we can do to honor those two men for what they've done for this city. Gerald's situation last year, I had some things go on and it kind of slipped out of the way side. But then with Sammy passing, you know, to the, to the books. And if we could be thinking about something that we could do to honor them, I'd ask we consider to do that. Thank you, everyone. I talked too much, but I appreciate you. Let me share.
I would just like to address what Mayor Hogan said about the budget. The time that I told you to be doing this was when you brought us a budget that was in the negative. And in law states, you cannot pass a budget.
No, I don't want to say.
When you brought us a budget that was in the negative.
I brought you a merger, I brought you a merger like that at that particular time, at the very beginning of the workshop. Y'all wanted to discuss and wanted to deal with departments and do cuts. So that's why I brought that, to allow us to sit down and see what y'all have played through the council.
The first budget you brought us was $5,000. We had $5,000 carryover.
That was a positive budget.
The second budget you brought us was a negative $2,700 or something. And...
The ordinance says to bring a positive budget before the council, and y'all was not pleased for that, so we did not accept.
So also, I believe that, I, I, we're still trying, I'm still trying to find out, is if on the budget, what percentage you're actually supposed to have as a carryover. So I don't think the $2,000 is actual appropriate carryover, or a $5,000 budget is appropriate carryover, or even a $10,000.
The ordinance says to bring a positive budget before the council. We have other items that we need to do.
Excuse me, but a lot of not believing the budget process. Y'all just jumped right over me and went it on, and Sam, I'd like to be deeper in this. The mayor was asked to accuse himself in the meeting last, maybe when I did my grievance. However, he chose not to do that, he interceded into that meeting and stopped on my committed decision. The only kind of remediation you do, as you well know, in a grievance, is not for money. The only thing you can do is restore me to preemptive status, meaning the same office, same page, the same office, the same everything. And probably back page, but that's it. That's the only kind of remediation that comes up with that. However, nobody's addressing it, everybody's just ignoring it. And so I, I would like to meet here, I would like to hear something from the city council. We've already, Mayor and I've already thought, it's now, you know, they've brought it forward to the city council. And I just walk my due process, that's all I ask.
Is that something that we need to have a separate hearing?
You've done, you've done this before.
It's not only a challenge that I, that I've got over this, Mr. Woodhand, if I hear, I'm sorry.
So what I would suggest is that I, I think in order to to address the concerns that are raised, that we just need to have a special meeting to deal with this college issue, with Susan's issue. I, I think that's the best way to go about it. That way...
I have a proceeding.
Let's...
I don't agree with you. He's my major supervisor, I'm great in about it, so he's not involved in it, goes over there, gets to the next level.
I understand. What I'm, what, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I think we just set a special meeting to deal with this issue. I'll provide some guidance to everyone on how I think the process should go. And then, you know, we have a policy, and we should follow that policy, and then we go from that. That would be my comment. And how that goes about in, in some way, and it just needs to be immediately scheduled.
We'll get that, uh, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Chief Hammond, hold on, Chief, go ahead and take your, your...
Mayor and Counsel, uh, council for the fire department for the month of May, we had thirty-three responding calls, six fire calls, zero rush fires, thirty-one up to SIS, two MBAs, zero to ten calls and three false alarm calls that come to this whole seven, seven call for the month of May.
Any questions? Thank you. I'll check in.
Yeah.
I saw yesterday that, that was a woman on.
Sorry.
Thank you. We're still in session.
Is that too long? Sorry.
All right, today, today we received a grant from Black Hills Energy for two thousand dollars instead of buying a, a line for trucks in Austin. They're resuming the check today, but Bill, if the council can take mine, I'll buy it to you. Say hi, Bill. The first aid is for a truck repair for nineteen hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Pretty much, Chad?
Yeah. You got it? You got it? No, it's four. Now, that, that's what I did. They haven't gotten a shop yet. We just wanted to estimate, so if you get a quarter on the night, I think you'll want less than that. That's the work I'm considering.
Will you just call it a bit cheaper?
Uh, yeah, it's our, our medical drug game and for a rush fire.
This money is going to make the plan out of the maintenance, but are you?
Uh, I think I made eighty percent. For, uh, for the, for the maintenance.
You used eighty percent? You already used eighty percent?
That's a technical shot prepared.
So essentially you have two trucks you need to repair, right?
Please watch the most important.
Is this other bid a rough bid or is it?
No, that's actually.
A thirteen hundred and thirty-five dollars? And you said the fresh truck, that's that mother, that's the high.
Yes. When I, when I told him, I told him, the, uh, consultant type of mechanic who worked at the academy, the parish there was on this weekend. And he said something about, where, where they just said, I don't know what that means. And that was more case there.
What is that?
What's the matter with him?
Uh, it's with the parish there, it was. But he, he talked okay, so he doesn't know if it, uh, moves to, goes to the.
Who's working on it?
Definitely the divisional side.
Council, I believe the ordinance that we passed earlier beginning will cover this that it doesn't figure.
Yeah, I was trying to say we just passed.
I, I didn't know, so I had it outside on.
We just passed that one and that's saying, because this is something like for a car and like a day to day, so you guys, like in operations, you have a twenty-five, those people you paid it. Like that's what this people is just clearing out.
Hannah, might add this, I, I don't know if you, you might get a different person to look at that, the Wayne Watts over at Fairview. He does a lot of work on the side. He does good work. He's pretty, pretty cheap.
Yeah, you gotta get it, bro.
I gotta get it. Might just get a look at it. Yeah. I worked with him twenty-five years.
On your, on your, your vehicle repairs, your day to day stuff, those vehicles, you covered under the ordinance that we passed.
So once you, once you get your bid, like, like already, or you said, you're.
You get a good final study and then that will be sent to the city council.
And just say that you're part of the council, you know this, um, so just put a copy of that and leave your information. Yeah. I'm sorry, I just, even if you have heard, since then, you've reported, such as passed.
So you're wearing a bid?
Yeah.
So you're, are you going to get another bid?
I can, I can email.
I still isn't, you don't, there's no approval of all things, but, but out of procedure, I would, just a, a practice, I would give more than just.
Well, just the others, don't worry, it's broad, yeah.
Yeah.
More than, more than. At least two.
I have three.
One, wait, then we meet this afternoon and go get a load of drugs.
Take it out, yeah, I'm sorry. That's it. I really did, something I have good practice of implementing. The ordinance does say we will have one councilman twenty-four hours in advance with all my information. It was over five hundred. So not just behind a good practice, that is in order that they have to make aware of it.
Look to your next items.
So the next one, I guess, will be Russell Leonard.
I, I, I think we need to table this till we find out about the ordinance.
It's code.
No, not that ordinance. I'm talking about the ordinance of what the fire department has to pay. You have to do the truck fund, they have to do the building fund. They, I know they think of building and maintenance, but until we find out what they are, the ordinance that states that the fire department's corporate sales tax goes to the building and maintenance. So until we find out what we're really doing when it's with the fire department and their funds, I think I just need to hold off on a five million dollar construction.
Oh, now that's a grant.
You want a construction.
And that's worth it, right? This, this is worth it.
Oh, this worth grand?
Yeah.
It just says a bid for.
Well, so you have to spend it for it. This is a budget. We have to talk a lot, say the nicer, you said three different bids. It's just about, that's what it costs.
Oh, it doesn't say anything for it, right?
Yeah, I mean, but just looking at his.
What's that?
He wants, he wants to stay there and want like five million dollars.
He, he, he's a person, he has to, until it explains what he was going to say, where the pie is for me and half a million, it's maybe twenty. Go ahead, the number's twenty percent. But it's the regedit, the whole article. Yeah, I just made a picture for y'all to look at, uh, what we were dealing with.
You guys open the photos?
Yes.
Can you see where the damage is?
A week, so after a month of you to have to come up, the fire department has come up three hundred thousand dollars.
It's about a hundred thousand.
Is this the only vehicle you got, chief? We just need to, we just have one with a grant for a lot faster than the show what it would cost. We actually have one for the instant grant, no, we just have to put it in the paper, take multiple bids, this is for the man, so let's give that for the cost.
Chief, why don't you explain the photos? They were really.
So we approved the twenty-five thousand dollars that they called up front. But the problem with that is it's aesthetic, the roof is, the roof is like, you know, we had to fix several times, it's been re-rut three times. And it's like you fall down inside, there's water leaking in the next place. If you don't have a paint six or seven, then exterior, well, very long, you can see where the, the concrete insulation, where you have to block.
On this side of the building, whether the block is, if you watch it, it's all right. This wall here around this garage door, that's one hundred percent wrong. There's going to be solid concrete all the way around this ground. Their blocks are supposed to be big. They're not. The flow buried blocks inside that building is open beams that don't have any retardation and don't have any concrete. As it's code, it's been in its code for years. If you don't run over the fire truck, it won't break. What's that? If you don't run, but with the fire truck, it's not break. Matter of fact, may have a feather for steel. That's right. Hey, don't hit me, I'll run over you.
That'll jump down.
So this is just, you're wanting us to prove you can get it or apply it for the grant, is that correct?
The grant is one point five billion and we're applying for the other one point five billion.
What is the process of this? Sorry. Uh, what is the, how long does this take? Is there a?
That is, she did a question. He's more than a grand. He had to leave fifty grand on the phone. I, I really can't answer that, because he doesn't owe a grand. We sent him a class to, to be a grand, he's more than a grand. He's more than about a class of ten, he's greater. So if I, I can get back to you on that, he would be able to, he would wait more than I did.
So when does this have to be, you don't know when this has to be submitted by?
Uh, do you remember what the date on that was on my paper?
I've probably said, maybe August, maybe this, maybe June.
That may be right. I guess you just can't get that, they see the end of something.
So it would be torn down from this.
The O part.
This wall back.
No, this wall, this wall, this side's dead.
Right, but from here.
They fall that way.
Oh, that, that way.
This is to replace that whole side? And the roof. With your replacement ability, you gotta replace the roof.
That, that can have a break, that's where it's.
I know, this is to replace that whole side.
It's gonna be the same height as this, you carry your, that's something. If you wanted it to have instead of two.
Yeah, the walls, the flats. Can I ask you another question and I might be looked at as a bad guy on asking this? It's eighty twenty grand, correct? So there's roughly three hundred thousand or more? How is that going to be paid? Um. Because right now, isn't there still a loan on this new part that's being paid?
Yes.
There's a loan on the new city hall that's being paid and now probably going to be a new loan over there, but I don't know whoever's gonna have to pay. I mean, how far, how deep it would go in loans?
So it's the biggest.
And I agree that, I spent years in that side of the, but.
That, that wall, the one that's on the ground. The bottom block is crumbling apart and the road very long. Either way, that makes it perfect.
Yeah. Well, I'm not saying it's not, and it needs to be taken care of, I'm just asking. Because like on this side of them, there were bids, there were grants, there was matching parts, but then all of a sudden, we didn't realize it, we had to dig out three and a half feet of subsoil and add all that onto the cost on top of it. I'm just, I'm just asking, throwing this out there as things, to keep in mind. And I understand that building, that side of it is. I was just wondering if there was a whole wall plan behind how it was all going to work.
I think you just lost the money. I think you just lost the money.
Yeah. You're right on.
Well, it sounds like you took that some, a couple of weeks at least before.
Yeah.
So what are you getting from us?
He, he said it had to be in the minutes. You know, that we, that we had spent it somewhere. That, that will fine understand.
So we don't actually have to make a decision on it tonight, though? Yes. We don't have decisions tonight, do we?
So you, you don't, you don't, we don't need to give them permission to apply the grant, correct?
Correct?
I mean, if you do, I mean, if you get, if you get a grant, doesn't really have to finalize it, I'm making... We need to always get a figure out how to, how to pay for, for, you know, the rest of it, the 20%.
So the last one, what do I need to, well, I just get away. Remember, what do I need to do?
Is there a medical noise? Seven?
I have a lot of questions about this. If I'm understanding correctly, you wanted a medical director to oversee operations of the fire department? Medical side, correct? Prior to this, I done some research, and I believe the BRNC covers the entire county. So how come you wanted an additional or a different medical director to oversee the medical side of it? If you already covered by the RNC?
So, if you try to call, there's a medical director, question, they will answer this. I have, Brad Charles, I called Brad, there was a message, he would give return. So we gotta, we ought to work on more, if we work, if we work out better. That would be really helping you.
So, uh, $5,000 a month, I believe is what it was? Was there, I have the contract that only has one signature on it, so it don't have yours signature on it, but why is that?
Because we got married, we never spoke to you. We, we talked it, we discussed numbers, and we just covered it fast, and money started getting tied, so you started working on budgets. We just covered it fast. Kind of got stuck in the middle.
Alright, um, I believe she was paid for the first quarter?
For seven tickets. And then I said, would that have a contract, you apply to the mayor again?
So, the mayor approved the, the first quarter payment of $5,000?
And then we had the, and you said, would that have a contract? That'd be, you'd offer it, yeah, that's okay. But you said, would that have a contract, you apply to the mayor again? It was under contract, sort of.
And you presented somehow a contract via email or left one to office to be picked up and signed? Correct. And then we resigned your services? So who's been the medical director overseeing medical side since she resigned? I don't think that's true.
What did you say?
Baxter Regional Brother.
What did you say after you did?
I asked, she resigned in May, what medical director was overseeing medical side? And he said Baxter Regional Brother. I don't think that's true. So, this is a phone call from May, and Mr. Kingston said that looking was not ever.
Well, there are, so we are, but that is, they might understand.
Hey, well, there's, do you have a operating manual with updated?
X and D's, yes.
So was it, was it changed to?
I don't think I have that, we just got, we have...
So I have a question. During this time of my medical directorship, you asked me to, to do. I know you, you and several of your members of the department. And then we agreed, and I provided my services, and we used my NPI for the medications, medical supplies, things like that. That's what called after my duty as medical director, regardless, you were still using my NPI. And it wasn't until I submitted my resignation to the mayor mid-May stating my NPI, everything needs to be immediately want used and pulled, that I resigned for last payment for the last eight months. And here we are, I have to go through the BRNC, I made a phone call myself. Schultz is not overseeing. Looking, Kingston is there. None, no, right now you have no medical director overseeing your medical side of things. Because of the way things are being done, Schultz is not overseeing, Kingston confirmed that today, that no one is overseeing your medical side of things. So, I mean, and for months, my NPI has been getting used and to order medications and to order supplies, and I'm not, I haven't paid.
What, what, what?
I don't know, I've got, I've got it for you to have to, to ask that, to ask specific questions on that. Because I can't answer that.
I just want to ask, do you allow computer NPI without sign contract by then?
So at the beginning, they came with me, so that...
And you had the contract signed at that time?
Right. Right, and he initiated, they initiated payment after that, he said he needed assistance on doing this. I guess it was, from what I understand, not just from Canada, but from Baxter Regional, there was a lot of not good communication. It was just not the relationship line. And so that, as of now, they have no interest in overseeing that aspect of it.
Now, she has a prepared petition on the inside. So this 4100 is what?
Is for eight months, yes, and up to eight months.
And that's what you have submitted, if it wants to be paid. So when was it, did you enter, you submitted the contract, and then you have received one in your...
Yes, in August. And I received the payment September. It was, there was something, there was, I submitted the invoice to him, he submitted it, saying it was lost or something. And then it was like six weeks later that I got, I received the first payment for that.
So even without signing the contract, you received it?
I did on the day, yes. And I did it to help the city of Flippin, truthfully. And now my thinking center still is, the city of Flippin, where there's no medical person overseeing this medicine side of things, and Baxter, as of right now, has zero desire to pick it back up. I do have a concern for continuation of who's gonna oversee that supply of things. I mean, it's concerning, because legally, you cannot, on that side, you cannot respond to emergent calls without that.
Do you know if I meant May, that you were?
Yes.
So are you saying we can't operate without that?
Right. The fire can, the medical cannot.
It's always been that way, Mary Jane, we can pay it. Medical has to have a medical director here.
I was, I was asked, because I oversee the sheriff's department, medicine, medical side as well. So it was brought to me because I oversee Marion County Sheriff's Department on the jail, and see those inmates and handle them aside. If I would do this side of it, which I agreed to do.
Well, I guess the first one of this is to get a plus on the line. Yes, I definitely need to take care of that, you have to take care of it, we've got to figure out what we're gonna do on the medical side of it.
I mean, if I, I, if contract is signed, I will maintain, if not, it's someone else is gonna have to do it. But also, if I am to maintain this, there has to be communication. And I will be notified when my NPI is used, and I should be able to sign off on those things. And not go then worry your silence on what is going on. And be expected to still provide my services without payment.
Did, did you want to get paid quarterly? Is that, is that...
Yes, I was calling to...
And that's the way you would have come up? I'm making, most of the money that we owe her, and then trying to get in her good graces, and she and Anna and you do something to rectify this situation. She's a citizen of Flippin, she's wanting to provide services and help take care of our citizens and help the fire department, and I think that there should be some constructive conversation and work together as a team. That's mine, that's for, I guess, taking care of it. Or there's a problem if we don't have, if we've not had a medical director overseeing from May till June 24th. I mean, that's almost what's happened now, that's a problem. I second that she gets paid.
We shouldn't have to second, like you said, what was the 4100, Ms. Marcus, in the other discussion? All fiber?
Bye, bye, bye.
I have a question, though. Does that mean we're gonna enter the contract with her, or how is that?
I think we need to have a schedule on me, or...
Do you want, she...
Wait, they need to have a schedule on me, or...
Yes. If she's willing, I appreciate it. She's willing to do that, look, sound, and have a meeting. Have my suggestion, whatever, whatever Ms. Marcus would proceed with me, and if you have a contract ready?
I've got it.
Okay, I have a contract ready with me, you too, so like, have a setup, set up a time, get with me, and then go. I don't mind meeting with you, if you want me to meet with you as well, come to my office, whatever, and we'll get it. Alright, one other thing that I have.
Did you talk to them about the mayor? We still have one more, the mayor's... The mayor, our boring machine?
It's covered.
Okay, I named it, Terry, I'll talk about it, because I was...
Yes, covered. She's still there, she, is she there?
I don't see her out there. The only other thing that we had, we had to register for a .gov email domain. I think there's all copies of Stacy's email. The government, or the state, is requiring all municipalities to have a .gov registration. And this is to help with security of emails. As you all know, we had an incident where one of our emails got hacked, and we almost lost a huge amount of money. So been working with the municipality, working with Stacy to get our domain, got it approved through the government for dominated websites. It looks like she found a way to cut us some costs on creating the emails. And her family managing it, I'm not sure about the, what side of the management that they would do. But you see the cost there for three years, or it's like it's $62 an email. This is also gonna create a generic email for the council, so we would do a word one, position one, for which everyone gets have. So you guys would have an email, and whoever comes in after you all, we would change passwords, same with the mayor, same with clerk, police chief, public works director, park director, those are all gonna be generic emails that would go forward for anybody coming in. I think we have figured with the police, and the two fire, public workers, we're looking at probably 20 emails. And here, Stacy put in for 20 emails, we were looking at saving $3,328. So it's probably, when I have that figured out, we'll look at 13...
62 taps 20?
Yeah. And that's per year?
About 40.
12, 40 per year, to maintain all our emails. This is something that we have to have. So the government is requiring to set at all municipalities, go to the .gov by June of 2026. And it has to be in place by I think it's 27. I have all the details that Jeff sent me, I created it all out, sorry. But it is a requirement, the government is working, since it is a requirement, they're looking at trying to get it for smaller cities free, but as of right now, it's not in place. I sent with the municipality and some of the others, this information for Stacy, they're having nerve meetings, so that way they can start helping the smaller municipalities on paying for it all. It was free for me to register and get the domain, but it's gonna cost right now for someone to create the emails.
Here this process of this situation, the, the comments they've played, that they're trying to get all municipalities to transition to this type of to the limit, what, what this stuff can happen. And since I'm a lot, if you will, safely protect it with with emails. And since I want, if you will, safely, protected with emails, communication and what all this is all of the procedure.
Sheriff will be paying this whole way up? I think it's going to be split with everybody who's got something. Jail would pay for his departments, the general would pay for Hogan.
So the, the, the police department already probably pays for emails because we have to, we have to have security mails. So our, our emails are already approved.
Stacy.
We would just do a little process, take them through the law process, take them up.
So this, this looks like it's already been done. It's already?
Yeah.
It's not been done?
The domain is. I've already registered for the dot gov. I've already been approved for it. We're just, to get the emails, we have to get the approval from Stacy to help over. I think she said, from our email, the buyer said the email that would save the cost, the city costs on the meeting, that's for the next three years. It was going to run, original email was a hundred seventeen, forty-seven per email and they got down to sixty-two dollars per email.
Okay.
Hurricane.
Part of the hurricane.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Has anybody looked into the office three sixty-five for the government accounts? Does the, they can use this account on that for managed emails?
Is it a dot gov?
Well, the, the, the service, okay, you can say whatever you own. You're like, you're a pointer from PNS to email service, they would use it.
I give the municipality.
Did you call the email that Stacy?
No, it's the office three sixty-five.
It's through office?
Sure, it's Microsoft. It's through Microsoft.
We already have Microsoft.
You're having the Microsoft.
You had the, the office three sixty-five, you have individual licenses on computers.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had that.
So if you have the office three sixty-five, if you're doing the government sub-site, the municipality side, that you should be able, you should have email already worked at. So all you need to do, change the pointer on the, uh, PNS records.
Office three sixty-five.
I just googled it and it says that while the registration for the dot gov domain itself, for you, maybe associated cost. Setting up and maintaining email services for all of the entities. So you can check with your specific government agency, Arkansas, for information. That's what Stacy does, is make it.
She gets it all pretty soon, she'll talk to you.
Yeah. How much a year? Sixteen something a year, sixteen or twenty-four?
Twelve.
Oh, twelve, well, you can't watch me.
If it's, if it's twenty-eight dollars an email, no, sixty-two an email, twenty-eight, twelve, twelve forty. And that would be split for twenty each, each month. That's a lot.
Figure out the, 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 the five hundred.
How many do you have? How many do I necessarily say?
Each one of you have the, I guess, two.
Yeah, we, we already, we already have, we already let Stacy have security.
But it's a Flippin, a city of Flippin, sorry. It's not a, it's not.
That's, that's Flippin Police dot.
I don't think you'll want that dot. We use three sixty-five office, but it's a secure network that we own. He said he used it.
Most of me.
The chamber uses them. We don't, we have our own individual emails, but I think that's probably the best deal you'll get with that dominator.
The chamber uses Stacy?
Uh-huh. Yeah, they.
Stacy's pretty well all Marion County. She handles the sheriffs.
I don't think you'll find anything cheaper, you know, than that. And they're here to service it, so.
Don't let me cross that. I'll make a motion. If there's something to be done, yes, that's what I'm. Dominated websites to be.
Have a motion to allow dominated website to proceed with the dot gov email. For the procedure of the passing. Sir, can you discuss that? October? It's carried. So I have a management, any council member, do you have any?
All right. Going back to the medical director situation. If we do not have another director tonight and they get a medical call. Is there a liability on us to go on a call without having a medical director?
Yes, there is.
I'm not a doctor.
So basically, you can be on a fire call, but you cannot on a medical call without medical directorship. And as soon as you walk out the door, you try to call James Pinkston, who sent him the mail. And then somebody would have spelled his name, that'd be the same. Pinkston's text to me right now. So instead of doing the chirping and went outside that door, what should have happened is it should have been discussed of. This is not personal, this is business and this should be opposite city of Flippin and the citizens of Flippin on medical coverage and ensuring they're taken care of. But as of right now and for the last few weeks, I think this is a huge liability for the city of Flippin. And if the state is notified of that, then they can ruin and take out everything for the medical side of this. So.
Yes, I can. I, I used to be a third.
Yes, that's why I was asking.
And they cannot without a medical director respond to a medical call, period. Because here's an example. A nurse in a hospital setting, a doctor writes to directors. And this is what you do. Out here, they don't have a doctor on scene, so they're working under standing directives. Which means whether it's Leslie or Pinkston or whoever has said under this contract, this is what I'm allowing you to do under my jurisdiction. They don't have that right now. There's, there's no medical from Flippin Fire Department right now.
And it hasn't been since May fourteen or fifteen.
So.
And he's known that, he has still continued. So that's, that's the issue. And that's why I'm sitting here today, not just to request payment. But for truly serve over the lack of, and either when I turned in my reservation to the mayor, oh, and Hannah was made aware of it. And did not reach out to try to discuss anything. It was just fly by the seat of my pants, I'm going to do what I want to do and continue to practice. Without a medical professional overseeing him on I don't know how many calls since I resigned. Seventy-seven. So if, if, if something had happened under that timing period, city of Flippin is held liable for that. And they're still held liable in this time. And the BRNC has their desire to go back into next to them and withhold that. So I don't know what the answer is for this right now, but it is something that is, uh, we're going to look at.
You understand your vote, really?
Yeah, yes. Can we not? Sign the contract, can I? Okay.
I don't have, I have seven license. So I have a motion to, uh, second. Oh, uh, next meeting, we have to move it, uh, if, if we're financial, I don't know if I catch yourself, the twenty-nine. Check, check, check.
We'll be, we'll be on.
Yes.
Alright, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll get.